I'd like to call to order the July 25th, 2023, call for council meeting. Cut out the roll call, please.
Council President Zink.
Here.
Councilperson Kaufman.
Here.
Councilperson Stahl.
Here.
Councilperson Fisher.
Here.
Councilperson Price.
Here.
Councilperson Lintner.
Here.
Councilperson Hergardt.
Here.
Mayor Look.
Here.
Alright, would anybody like to offer an invitation? If you would like to, please rise and remove your socks. Councilperson Hergardt, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Annals for the executive information sessions, there are none. Are there any additions, limitations, or reorganization of the agenda needed? I'm unaware of any. No, I'm correct, but I have a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Sorry.
I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stahl, to approve the agenda as published, all in favor.
Aye.
Any more opposed? So does this comment on agenda items only? Um, I don't have the sign up sheet, but is there anyone that would like to make? Um, but no, that's alright, alright, we can just, you know, any non-agenda or comments? And how about that? Tim Swartz, for the first time.
This is for non-agenda, right?
Yes.
Uh, Tim Swartz, 46 South East Street, Columbia. Columbia has a problem that just about everybody watches, Karen, and probably this whole country has, and that's homelessness. And I'm not, I'm here tonight to not complain, but looking for overall, an overall solution on how to deal with it. I personally spent some time with homelessness twice overnight. Uh, walking with them, talking with them, finding out why Columbia's a hotspot. Some I believe, some I don't believe. And we've had some, with our two businesses over here, we've had some issues with them. I've actually fed them. Give you a real quick story here, I fed one guy. He promised me that he'd come back the next day, he'll be screaming at the bus stop now, some of the sidewalks. I haven't seen him since. And if I do see him, he runs from me. It's probably not the answer. I can't say enough about our police department, how they're handling the situation, what we had. Sit, we had homelessness sleeping in, across the street, bus stop, by the church area. Uh, I don't know personally what the answer is, but for as much as it's going on downtown, the reorganization, all the good things are happening, you know, it's not helping us. Some of the biggest comments about downtown Columbia is homelessness, people laying around, cursing. You can see all the action during the day, they had, you know, they had some situations in the last couple of weeks with people like that. I'm actually, I got called to court next Monday because of the situation. And, you know, again, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't quite understand this church up here at Fourth and Locust, if it's, if it's even a church. Uh, I'm not sure what their function is, but I mean, I can share some of the things that they said to me, why they come to Columbia. Some of the things they did say to me, I won't share because it's really crazy, but drugs are so cheap up here. Just about anybody that comes to Columbia that wants drugs can get drugs for very cheap. They were very open-minded about it. Something about, I'm not even sure what kind of drugs they are. Plus, it seems like they put them on buses and sent them here to Columbia. Now, I'm not sure why Columbia isn't, is an attraction for homelessness. I have no clue, I mean, it's everywhere, but I see new faces every day. We just need to... I saw where, where the seminar on put up a sign on our buildings, private property. That helps to a degree. Uh, I come down at night, they're still sitting across the street, or sitting down on the patches. Uh, that's not a good thing. People are afraid. When they're walking the streets, you know, citizens are afraid to see these people. The other night, up here at this coffee shop, after they closed up, there must have been ten of them sitting up there cussing and yelling and screaming, whatever. You know, police can only do so much, you know, they move away, they bring, you know, they come back, so. Uh, I don't know what the answer is, I'm hoping council is aware of what's going on. I don't expect you to come up with the ultimate, you know, answer to homelessness, because it's all over the country. I would say there are some people that are well-deserving of being homeless, not deserving of being homeless, but are true homeless. But there are other ones that are lazy. They want everything and it's home. And I, I see that, especially up here at Fourth and Locust. Now, I know that used to be a church, and now I understand it's homeless, it's sheltered. I guess my question is, did that have to go through planning or zoning, or can that just be shut down? Can that just open up as a shelter, or?
It still functions as a church, they still have services on Sunday. Um, this is just one of the auxiliary
Accessory.
accessory uses that's allowed for a church, so yeah, so we didn't look at it through zoning. And it is allowed use.
Does, I mean, there are inspections of this place, uh, and the reason I ask that is, I had a homeless guy out front of my store, and he, he refused to leave, so I had him prosecuted. And go to find him, he had a works. So they took him to prison. I realize that they can't do that up there. I realize that they can't do that up there for everybody, but, I mean, when it comes to homelessness, shelter, do we do, do they do background checks? Do they?
If they're staying, they, they say they do. Um, but if they can't take one there, they don't do the background checks.
So if they can't accept them, where do they go? Just over... There's, there's a guy that sleeps off the park every night, I walk my dog, and he's there sleeping every day. I asked him, he said, "I can't find your places to go." I mean, I know it's not your problem or our problem. I mean, there has to be some kind of...
The county is working, um, on getting more shelters downtown. And so there, there, there is a, and through the, uh, housing, the redevelopment authority and, and all that, they are working on securing more shelter space. But can't have their own.
No, I, I get that, I just, you know, I'm concerned about, with all this work that's going on in Columbia, period. We don't want to have the reputation of being a homeless shelter overall. Having no sign of your responsibility or whatever, there needs to be, you know, I think every building almost has to have a no trespassing, or some kind of sign put on it that they can't sit there, or they can't sleep there. And, and quite frankly, I did spend a lot of time with these guys and girls. You know, they're, right now, they're hanging behind, um, three oh, three oh five Locust, I mean, they're trying to get upon a fire escape, you know? It, it's, it's quite concerning, not only to the businesses, but to our regular citizens as well. I mean, that's all you hear about it. And I know, and I'll finish this up here, I know when they come into our store or restaurant, it's a big topic. You know, why are there so many homeless people? Well, nobody really has that answer, but they're homeless everywhere. And I'm hoping council puts everyone in front of their head to recognize what's really going on here. And I do want to say that our police department, they just, it seems like they're locking up somebody every day that's homeless. That's homeless. And, you know, I'm sure they have better things to do. Uh, and run up the street here, somebody's sleeping at the bus stop, or they're sitting out in front of our stores or wherever, I mean, that scares people away, whether you know or not, and people just don't want to walk through. You know, people sitting there with bags, grocery carts, and stuff like that, so. I, I, again, I'm not criticizing anybody, or I'm just hoping that someday we come up with a solution to somehow help these people.
Could I, could I just make a suggestion for you? Um, I know that we certainly don't have the answer up here, certainly not immediately either, but the church of Fourth and Locust, you mentioned that, and I would really encourage you to reach out to Pastor Dave Powers, because I took a tour of the church twice, and they have a major operation going there, they really, I think you would at least understand better what they do there if you would maybe take a tour with him. And, you know, I know they've been hoping that people would volunteer, I don't know how many from the community have. They were hoping some council people would add in demand, send sometimes too, and help. But I would just encourage you to try that, maybe talk to him about your concerns. I, I know everyone that's homeless is not a shelter resident. I, I believe that's, you know, a pretty accurate statement, they're not.
I believe very, very few of them here are shelter residents, because they only have eight, and they takes like twenty people in. So we have way more than twenty.
And one thing you said, you, you did mention that some are lazy. I'm sure there are some, there's lazy people that have jobs, but I'm just saying, I think there's a lot of mental illness that goes along with this.
And I'm delighted to say that.
And, well, I'm nervous and I'll say it. Uh, I just think there's a lot of things that go into this that we can't fix. You know, we just can't fix it. I mean, there's certainly other things going on, but it's not always just an easy remedy, like to say, "Go get a job, you're lazy," or something like that, but I would just encourage you to check out the church and see what you can find out.
I like your idea, it's a great idea, but my preference would be, uh, by me going over, by myself, you know, that's, that's a great idea. My preference would be that council take the lead and invite him and businesses and residents down here in his room.
Often he is here, Pastor Powers often does a town meeting.
I like that, I mean, I personally, I would like to meet him.
Yeah, he will.
But with, with the group, with the Downtown Merchants Association, with anybody that lives in downtown, let him explain what he's doing. And, uh, you know, because I've heard some, not so good, not so good things, but that's for him to explain, if he's asked about it, but, you know, like I said, I'm not going to stand up here and say everything that I, excuse me, that I heard. Not just specifically about that church, but other things that are going on. And I guess the, the right way to do it is get to the bottom, get to it, have everybody in one room and discuss it. Hopefully that can happen. Uh, I think that may relieve some of the fears of, you know, I don't want to get up at three o'clock in the morning, go down here and find out who's sleeping in this beautiful garden across the street, or the bus stop, because Grills, malt shop, and Columbia Hotel, Columbia Collective, are dotted this block. It's pathetic that bus stops sometimes might walk by there. And that's just not homeless, it's also the bus people that are waiting for the buses. I don't know if you ever walked up there. Uh, and up the street a little bit further, I mean, it's just not one particular group. So, if we try every day, so you'll see me out there with a blower or something, or picking something up, just to... But it's getting disgusting, but, I mean, they don't care. And I'm just not blaming them on one group, so that needs to be more looked at, if you will. But thank you.
Hi, Mr. Swartz. Mr. Swartz, I do know that the, uh, the Columbia Shelter has a new director. And they just developed this whole policy that they, um, sent out to council, and asked us to send it out to interested people. And in that policy, they recognize that working with the community is, is very important to them. And they want to hear from you, and they have a way for you to, um, how to respond, or how to voice your complaints to them, so that they can deal with it directly. And like Sharon said, not everybody who is homeless is a guest at the shelter. And all they can do is, can, is, um, is enforce their policies to, for their guests. But if they're not a guest at the shelter, there's no way they can, then it falls, I guess, on the police department. But I would be happy if you left your email address to send you.
Sure.
Send that to you.
I sure get it.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I think a better idea is, we have done this several times. The Downtown Merchants should invite Pastor Powers, two more meetings, sit down and have, have a conversation. But let me say, uh, you're right, this isn't just Columbia, the University City, Ephra, all, all means powers. Uh, the Higginson County Mayor's recently, um, are taking, have decided to take on part of this homelessness. And there are many facets to it. The first, the first part of it that they want to attack is homelessness due to addiction. Recognizing that homelessness due to addiction will also take a minimal toll. Uh, we're working with an organization called Blueprints. And all our officers will go through the training, both officers have gone through the training already. Uh, but they will, they will be going through a refresher on the training, or do training if they haven't been through it before. We do have some new officers that haven't been through it. And what that is, is there, if, if the officers pick someone up under, that are under the addiction, uh, and their homelessness, they will, they will contact Blueprints. Have Blueprints take them, take them in, run them through a program. Now, they have volunteered to do that, can't do that. But now the court probation, juvenile and adult probation, the courts, uh, are looking to get on board, the DA's office is looking to get on board with this, to where if you're arrested, okay, if you're homeless, homeless, and arrested for being under the influence, if you go through successfully, complete the program, they will expunge your record. And the hope is, when we get them in this program, uh, that they'll, they'll get out, get a job, you know, get themselves squared away. So, so we're, we're taking one step there. I know that other communities, Ephra, Ephra, for example, I know very well, uh, they were having problems figuring it out. Other, other homeless shelters and hospitals and like, were sending people, some of them because they were filled up, but others because they did background checks and wouldn't take them because of the background, and they were sending them to Ephra, Columbia, and whatever they had. Now, they're telling us, and someone mentioned, they're telling us that they do background checks here, prior. But if they do a background check and they don't end up in a shelter, you're still going to be asleep. You know, so that's, that's the issue, and I think that's the issue that concerns you. And you're not going to raise a problem, do you need to work with it? But I, I would, I would encourage and I would be going with you to get with the merchants, to sit down, uh, with Pastor Powers, and, and let them, let him and his team know what you, how you feel about, and I'll say, about the money you guys invested in your business, and what it's going to do.
Well, that's certainly an option, you know, certainly an option that we'll take a look at.
You know, I, I saw what you said about signs. I was going down through Market Street in York City, where you go, and I seen these signs on all these windows. I stopped right at one of them, and what it basically was, was a no drugs, I started to go rooting sign, right in front of that, that property. They had them all in there. It was, it was York City's answer to the lawyering law being struck down as unconstitutional. And that's one problem we face today. Lawyering today, uh, we can't prosecute lawyering because it's unconstitutional. So if we're sitting around in public places where, you know, uh, we can't do anything with this, if we're not deserving of peace. But if you, if you post your property, as you, as you said, and as you probably know, the one individual that that wound up down in prison, uh, if they don't private property, then we just have to have that. Those. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Three minutes for approval. Could I have a motion to approve the borough council meeting minutes for June 27th, 2023?
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? I have one.
Yes.
Um, one page to read at the bottom where the comment was made by a resident, Frank Dafter. It said, uh, President Zink responded. And the part I would like to see at least me remove from, "There are limited funds, and council feels those funds would be better spent on projects other than audio and visual issues." I did not agree to that. I would, in fact, like to see us spend on that to fix our problem. So I don't know if we can change that somehow, but I never was presented with any even cost to fix it, so I don't like the way that's worded. Because part of it is to, in 2018, I advocated for video recording and live streaming mediums. So now it makes it look like I don't care about that.
To council, you can, you can straighten that out?
I don't have a problem straightening that out, like, but that was odd to put in there too, because I don't remember anyone specifically saying that sentence at all. Thank you. That's all. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stahl, to approve the borough council meeting minutes for June 27th, 2023, if there's one change. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve the borough council meeting minutes for July 6th, 2023?
Sorry.
I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stahl. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stahl, to approve the borough council meeting minutes for July 6th, 2023, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And do I have a motion to approve the borough council meeting minutes for July 11th, 2023? I'm going for it. And do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Stahl. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this? No, I have a motion by Councilperson Fisher, second by Councilperson Stahl, to approve the borough council meeting minutes for July 11th, 2023, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright. Presentation and acceptance of reports. I would like to acknowledge the finance report for June 20, uh, 23, and the property lead report, uh, for the second quarter. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on either of those? Um, I will say, the AR report is not included because after it was pulled, um, I had a question on something on it, and upon further review, there were some things that were not included in that report that shouldn't have been. So rather than presenting an after report, I said, "Let's pull it." And we'll get it in the next quarter. But more on that coming up. Any questions, comments, or concerns on the finance? And next up, personnel. Councilperson Price.
I'd like to acknowledge the resignation of CSA, which, um...
Presentations, there are none. Mayor Look.
Yeah, just two, two things. The news reported recently that West Nile virus has been found in your county. And mosquitoes can't make it across the river. But anyhow, uh, residents need to be reminded of high weeds, standing water, whether it's standing old tires, uh, buckets, pots, whatever, maybe holding water, especially with these thunderstorms that were happening here recently. It doesn't take long for mosquitoes to hatch, for the water to hatch out of that water. And I surely don't want to see anybody in Columbia Borough winding up with West Nile virus. So, uh, maybe we can get something out on, text my code, or something, reminding people that weeds and standing water need to be eliminated to help lock down this West Nile virus. Well, the other thing, and I'm sure Mark will probably talk about this later on, but, uh, information concerning the Veterans Memorial Bridge, Columbia-Richfield Bridge. Uh, seeing signs replaced today, uh, placing a weight restriction on the bridge. Chief Berman and I were talking this morning, one concern that we have among many, and I'm sure Mark has some concerns, but fire apparatus. I know West Temfield management record said his one piece apparatus weighs thirty-three thousand pounds. And it's a ten thousand pound unit. I would, I would recommend...
Twenty thousand.
Hmm, two times.
Ten thousand. Ten thousand.
Ten, ten thousand.
Twenty thousand pounds.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that, all right, thirty-three thousand, I would recommend that our fire trucks not use that bridge with Columbia and Richfield. If they're going, if Columbia fire trucks are going to York County, it's not on first, probably on the first call. Same thing with Richfield's coming to Columbia, it's not our first call. I would definitely recommend that they shouldn't use that bridge on, on any time traveling back and forth, uh, on a non-emergency basis. Like returning from a call, or just out checking out a piece of apparatus. I don't think this is the end of the problem with that bridge.
Mark, I'm talking about the sporting mayor, and I said that, um, the, the new radios, we can't get them ordered soon enough.
Absolutely.
Because they're going to be in peril if there is an incident. If, if we're going to need that cross-county communication.
And, and, you know, the, the structure, the, the way the bridge is, is built, there are, the end beach arch, I forget what it's called, but it's, it's a, it's a steel expansion piece that allows that bridge to move a little bit. They're steel, and they're rusty. If we have, we didn't have a bad winter last year. If we have a bad winter, there's a lot of salt in there, anything else comes on that bridge. I would think that further deterioration of pieces could happen, so. For me, they can't get on that bridge any sooner, uh, to, to get working on it. But I think, uh, I would not put anything connected with our volunteer or our borough on that bridge that's heavy, uh, just for safety reasons.
So, Mayor, since you brought it up, I did have, I was going to make some comments during my section, but also to say that we are in contact with the surrounding municipalities, with Penda, with our elected officials, um, county and state, to, to ensure that we are protecting the health, safety, and welfare of everybody on that bridge. And our concern, and Andrew's concern that he brought up, is that if there is concern about the weight of a emergency response vehicle on the bridge, then what you're saying is, if there's an accident, we can't go out there and get them. And that's unacceptable. We, we need to be able to respond to an emergency. If there's a simple car accident, you're going to have two or three pieces of apparatus out there. If there's a car fire, you might have four or five out there. We need to make sure that we can handle anything that's on that bridge. So we're in, in communication right now... So we're in, in communication right now with PENDO, with all the related agencies to put together a plan so that we can keep the bridge open as long as possible until this time is there ready to start building actual construction on the bridge.
And that's the part of your time, running the old bridge on top of the, the old bridge here. And then work on it whenever they can. And then when it's done, we have a walk-in and a pitch-in. But that's your bridge and the working bridge.
So I guess it's very positive, I think. First of all, moving on to force the PENDO.
It's up to the local municipality.
I understand.
And if you think, if you think Columbia Borough has personnel, get down there and weigh trucks.
I get it. The second thing is, what happens when Route 30 is shut down?
You're going to get auto traffic, which adds weight, each car adds weight.
Or die of cars.
If you're bumper to bumper.
You can have trucks come through.
No, trucks.
No, trucks will have to go down.
Trucks gotta go.
With the weight limit on, and, and we've, we've had multiple meetings on this because of the bridge project, there is a detour in place now. No one's going to make it, you go to Harrisburg. You go up 83, around, you cross over the bridge, you come down 283, and that's the detour. If you know your way around, you can hit Southern Exeter County and Southern York County and do the Normalness Bridge. Those are the only available detours that you have for when the 462 bridge is shut down.
Right.
If there is an accident today on 30, any truck that is on Route 30 must follow that detour today because of the weight limit on the 462 bridge. They are not allowed on 31. So they are already, as of this afternoon, being grounded in Harrisburg.
Why, wait up what?
To a bridge.
No, who, who else?
Oh, signage. It's, it's U-M, you can't cross the bridge, you can't come into town, you'd have to.
So what happens though, I mean, is there?
If they're caught, they're.
There, there in Hell. Yeah. And they turn out.
Yeah.
Where they turn out? There is a, they all play in the corner?
There is a crossover on the Hell side that allows people to do a U-turn if they had to and go back up.
Which in the event of an accident on 30, that was shut down on the 30 bridge, there would be people, there was police and everything there that were around anyway.
The signage, I don't think the, the detour is being put together now. They, they, they haven't designed, they weren't expecting to have to implement it now. So they're rushing to get all the signs up now. And the issue, just so we're all clear, is they did a recent inspection on the bridge, and the bridge is deteriorating at a faster rate than they thought. So they're lowering the weight limit allowed on the bridge to extend the life of the bridge longer. So they, they can get the engineering done so they can put a plan together on how to completely fix it.
This has been a test. Okay, this is exactly the commercial vehicle. So you got a question, whether, or anyone?
That's the question we're asking right now.
Not that I want to shut down.
Correct.
Tell me, tell me.
I don't have one.
I just.
The whole thing just doesn't make sense.
Right. Which is why we're meeting with PENDO now, and we've got Senator Almond, Representative Miller, and Senator this.
Eddie, 95, in what, two days? Three days?
Can you, this might be a really dumb suggestion, and it probably is, but can you put signs before people enter the bridge that they're doing some of their own risks and why? Or is that unconstitutional or something?
Well, has not a saying that it's safe for 95% of the vehicles, because there's ones for 10,000.
Can we let people know that before they go on the bridge?
The signage is up now.
Signage is up.
Then it's weight restricted, and we're trying to get it out, we're telling all the media outlets, everything, it's, it's been announced, but stuff like that gets missed. You just don't see it. You're driving, you go the way you always go, and you see the sign, and you're like, well, I'll commit it now. And then, you know, that could be the problem.
That you're following through the laps and.
Does it say weight restricted? Does it say why it's restricted?
No.
It's not, you want to know why. I would think, you know, I don't know.
Well, if I approached a bridge and it said weight limit this, and I know that I'm driving the vehicle, it's over that, I might want to know why, but I'm going to turn around first and then find out later.
First sign that I go, is that prospect route? So the, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we've lost getting pictures on the internet, trucks that try and block her, the bridge is that with the, with the height sign, and you know, they know they're above the lane, but they still try and go, so.
But as a concern, I would say that between our emergency management team and, and the other managers and all in the, in the area.
They've all stayed, stayed on top of it and trying to come up with whatever we need to come up with.
All the fire chiefs, all the police chiefs, all the emergency response teams are all going to include in these emails that we've been having the last week.
I think the more prudent we are on the use, the more use we may get out of it.
Correct.
All right. All right. Thank you. That was the discussion of, because I was wondering if I was going to say about the bridge, but I knew that that's. All right. Next, we have action items, we have some hard items. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 18 South Fourth Street for interior and exterior renovations to include the apartment above, new dormer, egress window, roof slash window replacement?
Seven.
The motion by councilperson Stoll, second by councilperson Price, to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 18 South Fourth Street. I can see that this was approved within conditions by heart. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
So I have a question, but it may be difficult. I'll ask you on this one.
Well, because there's three of them, so I kind of looked at them all as one.
And I kind of, they kind of.
Yeah.
The owner's here, by the way. Ben is here, the interior office.
Okay. My, my question is more so, um, you're adding a park at two of it?
Correct.
Did you get all three parked?
We talked about that, and you want to address the caution park.
Correct. So way around the corner at 333 Cherry.
Also the working piece, sorry.
We're working on adding some additional parking around the corner at 333 Cherry Street and another property being owned, and I'm working with an engineer, actually we have the plans, sharing, you've seen them. They're currently under review by the borough engineer to add six more spaces as per the requirement. There are two spaces required for each resident to use, so.
And I, I think you're correct, it was knocking it down from zero at heart. But can we get an approval based on meeting this business? Or are we going to prove it as a?
No, you're just going to approve.
We're approving the hard appropriateness. I don't understand why the interior stuff is included in the hard certificate of appropriateness because we're only improving the outside.
Right. So there are three properties, right? So one, we're ready to forward because two will be converted to single-family, and then on this property, commercials remain, but you're adding a department.
Commercial first, or?
Correct. And there were just a couple things that we just wanted, you know, to be clear to everybody on regarding the exterior.
That's already true. Yeah.
That's what we mean, commercial.
Yeah, we share commercials, all three.
Oh, I thought you asked us.
Yeah, the inside of that was all three, the, and Columbia-Rhysville was on the corner. On the sides.
I do have another question. Because I was not able to get down here to the whole meeting to see this, and it wasn't in the packet. Is there any? I didn't see any drawings or anything to show what the final outside is going to look like. So how can we accurately approve something if we're not given all the information to approve it?
So they just have, for the exterior, are you just adding the dormer? Okay.
In the back.
Okay.
So that's in the back, so that's not.
Right.
That's not from the street.
Exactly. And then, any rest in the window, right?
On the angles.
On the angles. And the rest of the roof.
So none of that really is seen from the street end, right?
Right. But we just brought it forward just to, you know, make sure that you're, you know, clear.
I'm very correct, Madam President. When I look at these, my first thoughts were, this is pertaining to the historic district ordinance. I would love to see a picture, for example, I'd love to see a picture, you know, I see drawings, but I'd like to see a picture of the windows, the doors, those are the kind of things that y'all are approving.
Right. I, I don't want to approve something for the, as being sort of appropriated if I can't even see what it is. I mean.
We should, are you saying that it's going to look just like what we're seeing, except that the windows are going to be replaced? Correct, and Ben is at practice.
Yeah, and I'll just add, all the windows are old and wooden and can be replaced, so that's why we're doing it. All the sizes are going to stay the same. We're not replacing the doors, so it's just new windows, exact same size.
And sidewalks, because that's everything, that's all going to be the same.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what type of windows you're putting in?
There's a brochure, I can't see there, they're, they're going to be vinyl.
Two over two windows, what are you going to?
We're going to match exactly what's there.
Yeah, I saw that down. Okay.
All right, are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? I have a motion by councilperson Stoll, second by councilperson Price, to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 18 South Fourth Street for interior and exterior renovations, including the apartment above, new dormer, egress window, and roof and window replacement. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Next, I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 20 South Fourth Street for interior and exterior renovations of the existing office to a single-family residence.
Seven.
Sorry.
And I have a motion by councilperson Fisher, second by councilperson Stoll, to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 20 South Fourth Street. I think we've already discussed this, but are there any further questions, comments, or concerns? No? I have a motion by councilperson Fisher, second by councilperson Stoll, to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 20 South Fourth Street for interior and exterior renovations of the existing office to a single-family residence. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. Sign, you want?
Yeah, I say thank you, taking the initiative, and especially in keeping it up on the historic.
And next, I have, could I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 22 South Fourth Street for interior and exterior renovations of the existing office to a single-family residence? I have a motion by councilperson Price, second by councilperson Stoll, to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 22 South Fourth Street for interior and exterior renovations of the existing office to a single-family residence. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. And here, you want to pass reserve? I don't know if you want to sign it now or?
No, we have to, we'll follow.
Okay. All right. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next, I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 318 Poplar Street for interior and exterior renovations, to interior repair to the porch, corners, front door, exterior brick, roof and window replacement. And the second, I have a motion by councilperson Price, second by councilperson Stoll, to approve the certificate of appropriateness to the 318 Poplar Street. Any questions, comments, or concerns on this one?
Question. You call, Karen, you call. Is this the property that we dealt with with the Alvin authority?
Yes.
So it's really nice to see it get to this point where it's going to be, first, that residents moved on to someplace better for them, and, and second, that we're now going to get this property, which we know is in a pretty bad state of repair, and we're going to bring it up and.
That's right. I have dots, you know.
This is a win.
It's a huge win, yes.
A lot of interior work, right?
Yeah.
That's going on, and exterior. Here, a lot of, a lot of time was spent by borough and the land bank and everything to get to this point, to assist the residents and, you know, get it to a point where we can get it home, fix it up, back into compliance with codes, and so it's a win again for everyone.
I was going to say, this is, this is a great example of why the organization Columbia Connections exists. It came to that group as a concern early on in the process, and that group worked together to get all the stuff in place to get to where we are today. So that's the team of nonprofits and other organizations that beat on a monthly basis to, to say, hey, how do we work together? And this is a great example of them doing exactly that.
Yeah, so. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? I have a motion by councilperson Price, second by councilperson Stoll, to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the 318 Poplar for interior and exterior renovations, to interior repair to the porch, corners, front door, exterior brick, roof and window replacement. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, and I will get this one. All right. We're good, thank you. And I, I saw a, some construction sign on.
Fire 21.
Fire 21, did you get that from the land bank too? Because I knew that Sean said they were working with someone.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good man. Is the back really like, long?
Just about.
Does it back work?
A lot of firework.
Yeah. Pre-burned.
Blowing itself.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, next, could I have a motion to approve the building minutes?
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Calkman, second by councilperson Stoll, to approve the building minutes, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. And I want your checks then.
Oh, do we have a check?
Okay. New business. Consider authorizing staff for two additional software models for the admin software for total $4,750. This is what I had been talking about a couple meetings ago. We were looking for a better way to do the AR, and found that there is an AR model for admins. It's $3,000 for the first three years, and then the costs would, the, the cost, the yearly cost would roll into our normal admins maintenance day. So when we were led to get the AR model. So, um, we would like to get the AR model immediately. There is another portion of it that will allow us to accept online payments. Um, we're not quite ready to pull trigger on that yet, but that cost is seventeen fifty for the first three years and then that will all in there as well. Some of the stuff that would happen online would integrate into admins, but not all. So there still would be some backend work, but not nearly as much as some of the other systems that we looked at because of all the integration. The AR module, I just did, just doing some quick, just doing some quick numbers. And I use Laura's salary because she's the accountant, so it would affect her revenues. But that three thousand dollars for three years, so a thousand dollars a year. What that basically it means to is an hour and fifteen minutes a week of Laura's time. So my question was, are we saving more than an hour and fifteen minutes of her time a week using this module as opposed to her database looking at? And the answer was not difficult, yes, and then some. The, what we're using now for AR is an access database that was developed by past employees. It can be maintenance, roll easily, and it has a lot of limitations, obviously, just as a database. Basically, I'll put it to a spreadsheet. It's not real, it, it functioned there for a while, but it's not the most feasible means. This way, the module would integrate all of our accounting software, so it's a lot, it's a lot less. It'll be a lot less work, the double data entry to stop, because as it is now, when they, when they have invoice, it has to be entered into the database, and when they get payments, something's been done in the database, something else has to be done in the admins for the accounting portion of it. So all that double data entry will be gone, so, I mean, it's gonna save, and it's not just gonna save Laura's time, it's gonna be time from other admins, it's gonna be Pam's time that's gonna be saved using this. I wasn't sure of the cost, and when I told the invoice for three thousand dollars, I was like, well, this is a no-brainer. To me, anyway, it's a no-brainer. Um, it's gonna make us more efficient, it's gonna make us more accurate. I figured we would put both modules on this executive brief and feel I'd like to approve both on tonight so that in, so we can get the AR module fairly right away, you know, right away in September when we get it back. And then we're going to get the, the online payment portion of it, what's it called, lift or something like that. We're going to getting that later on in the fall. To me, it's kind of a no-brainer.
Madam President, you said something that was important to me, more accurate. When you double everything back and forth at all, you, you just increase probability of an accuracy. That's why this year is gonna help that, that's.
That's it.
That's gonna be here.
I love the idea of being able to pay online, but can you explain to me, it said certain invoices, would that be like parking tickets, street sweep things?
Well, there, I would actually guess that there's a lot more set up for the, because the police are not integrating that. They're not integrated.
So it wouldn't necessarily include that.
Not right away, we're looking at how to include that.
The, the police staff have access to admins, the software they use to track the tickets is not integrated. So to be clear, so we're using a program now called Visual Alert that when tickets are issued, the information is entered into that system. Then over on this side, when invoices where our ticket is to be paid, we can pull up Visual Alert, see what the fine is, and then goes through the process of checking off that's been paid, et cetera. Then we have to, they have to go into the other system and check it off. If they're paying a code violation, they have to go into CSF and do work there. So there's still multiple steps that have to happen. So we wanna make sure that when we go to set up things online bill pay, people have the ability to pay properly and that we know that we're capturing everything correctly.
Right, because the problem is, if someone pays a parking ticket, but that parking ticket has already gone to the magistrate's office. When they try and pay a quick ticket, it's already gone to the magistrate's office. We can't accept it here, we can't accept the payment here. So we don't want someone to be able to pay online if we can't truly accept that payment because it's going somewhere else.
So what, would this be taxes, or what do they pay here now?
Well, that's, that's.
That's why we're waiting to acquire this, so that eventually we can do almost all the invoices online. We just gotta get everything in place first.
Right, you know, we have to get the backend of it set up.
We want to be able to pay their rental registrations online. So when the letters go out, you'll get a code, you can come in, log in, pay your rental registration online.
Right, or you don't even have to come in, you can go online to the.
Yeah, online, pay your.
Pay here. You know, other, you know, the news towers, if you've seen one on the website, they have like pay here button or pay your bill button.
We have everything all set up to, to make sure that we're integrated properly before we do that.
Well, so if we pay the seventeen fifty now, though, it says here, you know, we're not ready to implement it at this time. What's the timeframe when we would be ready?
We're just getting authorization tonight so that we can.
Right, we're gonna pay it.
Why aren't we all set up and ready?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just figured, rather than come back in two months and say.
Explain it all again.
Explain it all again, I'd rather just cash it out now so that when we're ready to spend the money, because we have the backend set up, um, we can do that. But yeah, this, this would be, it would be a huge benefit to, like I said, then, the online bill payment isn't necessarily gonna save us any time with the backend, but it'll, I see it sort of like being able to pay tax bills here, it's a service to the, to the citizens, so.
And just as a side, one of my, my authorities that I represent switched from, you have to bring in a check or mail us a check, to online payment. And their collection rate went from about seventy percent to over ninety percent, basically overnight, just because it's so much easier for people to either set up that automatic payment through their bank or through. So it, it really does increase the collection, um, the collection criteria and get that presented off.
And hopefully, you know, if we do the integration properly, we won't have to send as many things to the magistrate because they'll more easily be able to pay. Like, you're sitting there and you get this thing, you're like, hey, you can go online right away and pay it, you know?
Will we be incurring fees for credit card purchases?
No, and those are credit card fees that happen from this, get passed through to the user of the service.
They pay the fee.
Yes. Yeah, just like any of your other.
Your.
Yeah. Yeah, like I just paid my corner shirts that way, and it was like, oh, would you have to pay the fees for using your card? So.
Question on the budget line item. It looks like seven five thousand of the budget, and we're already down to twenty-three thousand in that for the year six months ahead.
This is, the line item is all the IT contracted services, so includes our IT team and all of the software purchases. So yeah, it is down, but if we have to adjust it, we feel like this is a worthwhile investment to get this in, get it now.
I guess my question was, is that gonna put us over the edge? Or, or were there purchases within that that were already happening for six months anyways?
There are, there are costs in that that, that aren't for the regular monthly cost. You can't take that divided by seven and say, we spent this much for bar, but some of the other things we have spent more on. Acquiring computers, some other things, if we had initial software, it changes, we did, a little time loss.
So I think what you're asking is, is person throw us out?
Oh, yeah, I, I think.
I will say, Tammy is very excited about this. She has spent a lot of time researching the different softwares and everything, and different tools that we could implement to make things more efficient and more accurate. And be, you know, make us better when it comes to making sure everything is in compliance with audit, things like that. So the fact that we got to this point, I'm, I'm pretty excited because, like I said, she has spent a lot of time researching and, and going through demos and talking to vendors and everything else.
I thought you were talking a little late about this.
That we were, and I think the reason we were was because the people that were here were not able to use it properly. And we got, when we hired Tammy, we were actually talking about going to QuickBooks. Tammy was, you know, previously worked as getting people converted to only QuickBooks and everything else. And as she started to learn more about municipal finance and everything, she's like, oh no, I would not wanna get rid of admins. This is like, this is like a Cadillac of municipal accounting. She's like, if you're in QuickBooks, that's, you're going backwards, especially with the number of, um, the number of different funds we have and all those things. So Tammy's like, no, we are actually not getting rid of admins. Um, and she's been quite rapport with the people at admins. The, the, the costs for these two models also include all of the staff training and everything. And since we're already using the online, since we're already using the staff's model, we're already integrated directly with them, it's not like we have to get anything new, load it on here, you know, number. We don't have license software, they have to load it, and things like that. So it'll be a seamless integration.
So Mark, if you do have to adjust this budget before the end year, where will that come from?
It, like anything else, we'd have to simply adjust the numbers or increase the amount that we're taking out of reserve. When we budgeted at the beginning of the year, we assumed a certain rate of revenue, we assumed a certain rate of expenditure. We're gonna have to go back and look, most years, the way that I have learned over the years to do this, if you're extremely conservative on your revenue side, and so that hopefully at the end of the year, you actually bring in more than what you budgeted for. And costs are costs, and some things are hard to predict. So in the past two or three years, we've actually come under our estimated, or over our estimated revenues. Does not happen to draw down out of the reserve fund at all last couple years. And we'll just simply then adjust the expenditures to match the line item. One thing that we are working hard to do is ensure that from the initial budget to the end of the year, we know whether we missed it, we went over, we were under, so that the next year when we do the budgets, we look at all that. Every time we did adjustments during the year, kind of threw off that gauge. So it looks like at the end of the year, we did good, which we did. But I wanna know why by line, where everyone hit from the beginning to the end. So we'll make the necessary adjustments at the end, but we'll know exactly where the money's coming from.
So this is three thousand dollars for three years subscription. Four thousand dollars a year, or three thousand dollars upfront for all three years?
Three thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollar total?
Three thousand dollars upfront for all three years. So three thousand, we only get it for three years, so.
And then after that, is it rolled into?
The cost of it is rolled into your, yeah, admins subscription.
It's really three thousand dollars a year, we're just paying them upfront.
No, it's really.
It's three thousand dollars total, or a thousand dollars a year, we're paying three thousand upfront.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not nine thousand, it's three.
Right.
So this won't be a line in the next year.
No, it would be included as part of the admins.
Is there a reasonable margin for that, all lots, is there a discount?
Well, because that's how they require it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like a three-year thing, the first three years.
I think it's a, I think it's an expired, I think it's a.
Exactly. Like I said, for an hour and fifteen minutes of Laura's time is always, and we're gonna get, we're gonna gain more than that and save.
It could be used for our banners, it's gonna be used for residents. It's gonna be that way.
Yeah. So. Do we want more time, or we, okay, would anyone like to make a motion to approve this? Podlin, guy second. I have a motion by Councilperson regard, second, by Councilperson Stoll, to authorize staff to purchase traditional software modules for the admin software for a total of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And further questions, comments, or concerns? No further questions, comments, or concerns? I have a motion by Councilperson regard, second, by Councilperson Stoll, to approve staff to purchase two additional software modules for the admin software for a total of four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Tammy will be happy, I'll text her in line. Next, we have a special event request for St. Paul's Baptist Church to use Maple Park on Saturday, August nineteenth, from seven AM to nine PM for a back-to-school barbecue. This is pretty selfless, but according to, are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the special event department? I have a motion by Councilperson Nitter, second, by Councilperson Price, to approve the special event request for St. Paul's Baptist Church to use Maple Park on Saturday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, from seven AM to nine PM for a back-to-school barbecue. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And next, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three approving the proposed extension of the premises onto the public sidewalk adjacent to two twenty-four Locust Street. Starview Ruse for the purpose of the, um, liquor license.
So I agree with everyone on the third street. Um, I agree with giving that permission, but honestly, I think we ought to wait till Tuesday night to ask this on, I would monitor that and keep it with that.
I agree, because, I mean, do they have plans to put?
The, the PLCB will require that too. If you have an outdoor premises, if you extend premises specifically onto the public sidewalk, which is why you have to do a resolution here tonight, um, they require you to have some type of barrier, whether it's a rope or railing or whatever the case may be, there has to be a delineation where you can have your, your beer out here, but you can't go past that point. So it makes it at least relatively easy for the police to see if someone has it open container somewhere they shouldn't have it open container.
Could I ask, maybe this is for you, Sharon, the seating, will this change the, the capacity for them then? As far as the number of people they're allowed to have in, if they add or start outdoor seating with that increased capacity?
I believe they're only adding, what was it, ten, twelve, ten to all additional seats, two tables.
So I, I guess tactically, more people could be there, but.
I'd go for parking.
For parking, yeah, we don't, we don't calculate that to an additional seating space. It has, it's not expanding enough to raise any concern. My only comment on delaying is they're, they're trying to get this application finished this month. So a delay would, would put them off, if, unless there's major concerns, I would ask that we can try to take action tonight for them.
If the, if there was, if there was, I would usually say, if there was an issue, the chief going, who's the magistrate meeting and all, all over this, what are those concerned, what are those concerned? He did, but I can say that we have several now in, in town. And we also have, I'll say, banquet facilities where people go outside to smoke. And in the beginning, we had some issues with people stepping outside with a. And in the beginning, we had some issues with people stepping outside with a green finger handed to have a cigarette. Uh, and with our, with conversation with the owners of the properties, um, I think Columbia, the emergency Columbia, the business Columbia have been doing a very good job policing themselves themselves. So I, it's up to you, I understand what you're, you're saying, but I, I feel very comfortable with the, uh, with the policing, I'll say self-policing of, uh, of, 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 by, by merchants.
I have a whole other one, uh, which is, yeah, one idea. What is it?
Your car's worth it.
Does anyone have any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, correct.
When some of these merchants or owners take, uh, part of the sidewalk, who takes the liability, responsibility?
They do.
They do.
The property owner?
Yeah, we have them sign a whole pharmacy.
Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? Did anyone make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three approving the proposed, um, extension of the premises onto the public sidewalk adjacent to two twenty-four Locust Street? I have a motion by councilperson Coleman, second by councilperson Stoll to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three approving the proposed extension to the premises onto the public sidewalk adjacent to two twenty-four Locust Street, all in favor. Aye, anyone puce? All right. Staff, reports, comments, and announcements, uh, closer cable.
I only have one major thing, I think we're going to have an executive session and talk about some of the, the lean things, uh, after this meeting is over. Um, but, and some good news, we recently received, uh, a withdrawal of the appeal by Awakened Properties. Um, so they have chosen to withdraw that appeal, so that is over at this point in time.
For the admin.
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah, so no more of that hopefully. I, I've been meeting to talk with Mark and Sharon to see if there is, you know, make sure that there's nothing else going on there, obviously.
It's Chestnut.
Chestnut.
Yeah, seven thirty-two Chestnut, yeah, yeah. So just wanted to, to give you that update tonight, I hope that was a good thing, so.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I had that resolution this time. I don't know what I told you.
And, oh, go ahead Sharon.
I was just going to ask too, um, where do we stand on that handicap working thing? What are we going to work on that awareness as far as?
Requiring that the, the sign goes underneath there, so it goes, does someone pay the nine dollars for a parking sign? It's, it's for them or not anybody's?
Back at the ignore work session we talked about, kind of turning that.
I will, I will, I've worked on that a little bit, I will definitely get that here shortly, yeah, absolutely.
Trying to pressure.
No, 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 there's been a lot going on, but we will absolutely get, get that, yeah.
I needed to follow up to find out where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I will give one shameless plug alert, my wife's band is playing at Fourth Friday here in a couple of days. So if you want to see some, here's some good classic rock at the Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo Bank, they're going to be there.
They got, they got ranked out last night, didn't they?
Yeah, yeah, so if you're out, we'll be out, have the baby and, uh, we'll have a good time on Friday night.
And what is it, what?
The Wells Fargo, they're playing at the Wells Fargo, the Wells Fargo, yeah.
All right, um, Secretary of Treasury, Mr. Sargent?
Thank you. Um, just a, a few additional items. One, due to the excessive heat, um, over the next couple of days, um, the Lexer Emergency Management Office reached out and wants to get a list of all the cooling centers that have been opened up or will be opening up to provide relief and refuge for people to away from the heat temporarily. Um, in talking with Chris Vera, we're going to be opening up the Market House on Thursday and Friday from nine to five, so that people can come in there, get some water, cool off, talk, socialize, um, whatever. So that will be open. Hands across the street, the church will, they're also going to be open during that time. So there will be places of refuge for people to away from the heat temporarily. If any other ones open up, um, we will get that out on social media, et cetera. And, um, and what's that other thing called? Text my go or something? We'll use text my go to get that message out as well to let people know that those, um, facilities are available. Um, Mayor, I, I thought for sure you'd jump all over this. There is a small event happening next Tuesday, um, with National Night Out. Oh, um. Is that near us?
Everyone is hoping on it.
Oh, it's Todd's, all right. Well, I'll let Todd talk about the rest of, of what's happening there, but I just want to announce that, um, the Mobile Emergency Operations Center will be out there for its grand unveiling. Um, it is almost finished, um, at least at this stage, so we'll have it out there for people to see. And, um, we'll have a team there to kind of talk about why this is, this is important, why we have it available and how it'll be used. So if you want to come out and see it, come out, ask my name out next Tuesday. Um, a lot of questions have come up in the last week or so about the issue with live streaming our meetings again. Um, I just wanted to just announce again to everybody, we are currently recording the meetings. We're posting them on our YouTube channel, so within a day or two after the meeting, you can go look at it and see. Uh, we are, uh, I have a second AD company coming in this week to give us a quote on the cost. It's going to be to make some improvements in this room, not only for the purpose of live streaming meetings, but also the ability to host web-based meetings here in this room properly. Right now it's kind of difficult, we kind of take computers and kind of an angle of cameras, you can kind of see some of the people. That cam in the back of the room is for live streaming only, we cannot use that for, um, virtual meetings. So we're trying to get cost to make those improvements, to make those upgrades, so we can do that. So for now, again, the meetings are being recorded and we'll post them. Um, when the recordings work, sometimes we've had constant problems with it. Um, some of the meetings start to record, then it cuts out on us again. So when we can, we'll get the, the videos posted and hopefully get the system fixed.
Excuse me, whatever you're talking, can you please stop? It's very distracting.
Um. And again, I will simply keep saying it as often as we can. We try to do our best to push out information on text my go. If you haven't signed up, please sign up. The number has started going back up again, which is a good thing. Um, we want to get as many, as many people registered as possible. Good information goes out there, but also if there is ever an emergency or critical information has to be pushed out, that's the method that we'll use to push it out, so please sign up. That's all, thank you.
All right. Yeah, and one of the, um, issues with the recording was the last meeting, it did not record, so. I mean, we were looking for the last meeting on YouTube, it did not record, is there something?
Chris, on the live stream, you were taping it and it's going online at the borough?
No, on YouTube, on YouTube channel.
To the borough website, you can get to it from here, yes.
Okay, do you have a way of knowing how many people get on there and view that?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we have the ability to track the number of people who may click on those links and we can track that, yeah.
Do we have a way of knowing how many people, when we streamed it here, we got a way of knowing that?
You see, when you do, um, Facebook Live, you see how many people are connected at the time that you're, you're running it, yeah.
Okay.
Best thing you can do is to subscribe to the Columbia's, the Columbia Borough YouTube channel.
All right.
We have to have a thousand subscribers to that channel and we're to live stream our meetings through YouTube. That's our ultimate goal, is to stream on YouTube, not using Facebook anymore.
Right.
So subscribe to the YouTube channel, if we all do that, we get a thousand people to subscribe to it, we could be live overnight.
Well, once we get it going up.
Once we get all the. Yeah, right, once we get the, the tech.
The way it is now, there's people not going to take the time to go get that.
YouTube's right on your, it's right on your phone, it's right on your computer.
Yeah, right on your phone, when you subscribe to the channel, you can find it right away. It's no different than the Facebook app.
Mm-hmm. But I, I just talked to some of them, that it was easy to stream, you know, that they just got it right on their phone. But to get this otherwise, they, they said, I'm not, they don't know, I guess, and I don't either.
Yes. I mean, this is really, they're not the part for comments, but.
Amy Kellers, um, for using text my go, which I love, and everything you guys have talked about tonight, I just don't know why text my go. If you need people to subscribe, wouldn't that be a great place to say we need a thousand people to subscribe on YouTube? Because text my go is great.
Well, yeah, but the, the thing is, you don't want to overload people with, uh.
I think we can handle it, Heather, I don't think we get that many messages on text my go.
It's a great idea, thank you.
Well, right, but that was our concern when we had it, was if people get too many things, they're going to just start ignoring them, so.
Text my go.
Yep.
Text my go.
Um, next, boroughs commissions and committees, per minutes, in your package, you have a planning commission and civil service commission. Um, per minutes, per council comments, councilperson Stoll.
Well, there has been one said already about text my go, but the, the apparatus of using the newspaper and other forms of putting information out is frankly outdated because people just are not widely subscribed to this thing. And for any information on events, road closures, bridge weight restrictions, text my go. It's all come to my phone here in the last month or two, it's very bad.
Yes.
Stay in the loop.
Like the other morning, I get a text from my boss, text my go. Yes, person Price.
I just had one quick question and maybe you can answer it since the chief's not here, Mayor. Um, we, I thought I had gotten some police equipment that enabled them to take photographs of people when they are charged with things. I saw a lot of things in there that there's no photo of.
A lot of scan.
A lot of scan, yeah.
It just, I see several arrests, but no pictures, so I just wondered what happened to that.
Yeah, I don't know, we have, we have equipment, we have equipment available now that will do a lot of scan, fingerprint.
Yeah, I thought we got new stuff.
I think Sharon's asking is on, on Facebook and on that page, I'm talking, there's a picture of a person. But recently, recently did after being, it's all.
I asked the chief, but there may be a legal reason for that.
Okay.
Or I know there was a lot of them were having juvenile technical issues with.
Juvenile, yeah, you know, having duties.
Okay, well, these wouldn't have been juvenile, but I'm just asking because I thought we paid for equipment for that purpose and I just wondered what happened to it, so.
I did, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Next, councilperson Coleman.
I have nothing to say.
Councilperson Fisher.
Yeah, National Night Out, uh, Tuesday, August first, six to eight thirty, Atchafalaya Memorial Park. It's going to be over seventy vendors, in addition to free food and drinks, capital F R E E. It's going to be first responder displays with fire trucks, ambulances, and police cars and those firing people who man those vehicles. There's going to be a K-nine demo from Lancaster County Prison along with animal displays, going to be a juggler, bounty house, and lots of other things to, for, for your whole family to enjoy. To end the evening, we're going to have fireworks from eight fifteen to eight thirty. So, uh, see you there next Tuesday, August first, Atchafalaya Memorial Park, six to eight thirty.
Get paranoid, the parking is under. Always great. Also, Marlon, I know Riceville has a national layout pattern. And see it all the time, I think, you know, we have four times a year. Why don't we get a pattern made for that one out? It's always, that was the first, you know, it's more offensive, that, and as long as that, that'd be a little bit bad down here.
Oh, yeah.
But that, that's almost rich, that's.
It was a beautiful park, Keith.
Yeah. That's a good idea. I think we should, we should stay ahead of that. Intersect, I started out by this couple of days. I was going to say, it's a great, or.
That goes into, I would like to see the rural churches, one or two more. That kind of signboard that you have to see, you know, when you have, one or two more then. And we can, because you can do multiple things, whereas you can bend at River Park, you can put that up, or whatever. Natural layout, you can set, you can set one out on east end, one on west end of town. There's so much you can do with them, more than just recording speed.
Right.
All right. Anything else, question or?
I'm going to thank.
Um, I want to tag on to the, uh, National Night Out thing and council, I would, um, the borough is going to have multiple, um, tents and everything. This is a great opportunity to, you know, just get face time with the community. If you have half your crew to be out there, have a half hour to stand at one of the, the borough, um, tents and greet people. It's a great opportunity, take the business cards and, you know, get face time with the constituents. Um, other than that, I'm, well, see it in all the activity downtown, I think it's great. Um, spending your time here in the borough, so. Oh, and, um, the next work session, since Tues, it will technically be Tuesday, but since that is the National Night Out, our work session is next Thursday, um, the one who announced that at that work session, we will be discussing the Longest Street project from third to front. Um, and also the, we will be reviewing the comp plan, so should be a pretty exciting, uh, work session and lots of exciting information happening with that one, so, yes. I know, Parker, I saw you got, you started the panic and I looked at Sharon and she started to panic and I was like, yeah, we're doing that too. But, you know, so I just want the public to know, if you want more information or you want to say some things about the Longest Street project, come to the work session and, um, we'll be going through that. Announcement of next meeting at seven PM on August third, council will hold a work session. Um, this evening, we will be adjourned to executive session to discuss pending litigation. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
I have a motion by councilperson Price, second by councilperson Stoll to adjourn at eight twenty, eight PM, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, anyone puce? All right, we are adjourned.